Let's call the order. We have a quorum. We start by checking to see if there's anyone to do public comment. I don't see anyone on the screen. Celia, do we have anybody in the queue? Okay, then David, you wanted to introduce some folks right at the beginning of the meeting. You want to do that?
Yeah, we have a pile of people here tonight. I just wanted to kind of acknowledge them, some of them. So Jackie Spate, you guys had met some time ago. She was the principal of Focus Connect, who was the architect of our IT transition. And managed to pull it off with a whole bunch of people, but never lose her cool, which was pretty impressive. I never once saw her like even slightly surprised by anything. So maybe you hit it well. I don't really know. Amy Shum is here tonight as well, along with Jackie. Amy's obviously our IT manager, IT director for the library. Maria Tormos is also joining us. She's our new head of communications. I know some of you have met her, but she will be attending some meetings as we go forward. And then I also wanted to introduce Eric Mead. He will be sitting in on the meeting tonight. He is the consultant who will be working with you and I for the retreat in March, and we'll talk more about Eric and later on the meeting under the directorship. So I don't think I missed Jennifer and Celia. You all know. So we're here for each meeting, so.
Well, great. And thanks again to Jackie and Amy and the team for just that amazing job in getting all of that startup and doing it in a way that had staff smiling.
Yeah.
Just wonderful. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like Chris Barge just joined us. I assume that's Chris. So our first item is library policies review. Jennifer, you want to take it away?
Sure. I, I think we had a pretty robust discussion at, I think it was mid-December when we looked at the rules of conduct. That's the first policy in the packet. So we took your feedback and incorporated into the rules and in your packet tonight is the final draft that I'm just here to see if you have any questions or edits or input on those rules and if if we can move ahead with approval after we consider any questions or feedback.
Great. I have a couple of comments and a question, but let's see if anybody else can first. Anybody have anything from the rules of conduct?
Jen, I had asked Tim in the last call about the rule around how I'm not, forgive me, I'm a little bit getting a little sick, about not soliciting any donations or anything of value. And there being some conflict around the Boulder Library Foundation just raising money inside of the, inside of the library for the library. And I, and I know Tim had said that this was really about people not soliciting money for themselves as individuals. And I just wanted to confirm that because the language is about no individual shall, that the foundation is, you know, sort of protected or is able to still solicit donations for the library inside the library based on the rules of conduct.
Jen. I do, I feel like they are exempt. We wouldn't necessarily want them to go out and solicit donations just walking through the library, but if they're doing it at one of their events, it seems appropriate. And the rule is around like panhandling and selling arts and crafts out of the cafe, those kinds of things that happen that we would just like to prevent have.
Totally. I just want to make sure the wording is like broad, broad enough or tight enough so that it's not, there's not like, someone doesn't point it out to us as a problem. But that was the only, my only flag there.
Let me see, what rule is that? Do you remember?
Yeah, it was like no one shall solicit donations or anything of value. And I just want, yeah, I just want to protect the foundation in that, in that particular activity.
We could add something like accept as permitted by the executive director.
We can if we need that. So what we have done in the past, Jen, is groups frequently ask for the ability to do fundraisers and within our spaces. And so they just cannot transact and or ask for money. They can show people. And the same applies to some extent to the foundation. They can show people how they can donate. Now, the foundation goes a little bit further than that, but no other group is allowed. They can, what we typically recommend to groups to do is if they're doing a fundraiser in the library, have it on a QR code or a web address and promote the web address and say that they can find out more about how to contribute to your organization to whatever.
And that, that makes total sense to me, just as long as the language doesn't create some conflict for some member of the public who says, I thought you said, you know, we can't X, but you know, this organization is doing X. Just want to protect the library from that perspective.
And so the question I had actually kind of piggybacks on where Jen was coming from. And it was raised for me both for number 10 here and then looking forward to the Canyon Theater pilot. There's a rule that says nothing can be sold in the Canyon Theater except books, which is fine with me. But that made me thinking about JLF, which only sells books in the Canyon Theater part, but they do sell gifts and food in the South Side. And I don't know if we need a policy that says, you know, the director can allow this sort of thing. I don't think we speak to it anywhere. It seems like it should be in the rules of conduct. If we haven't. So I just wanted to raise that again from the same perspective. If somebody says, hey, wait, why can't I do that if they are already doing it?
Yeah, you're absolutely right, Johnny. And that's a touchy one. I'm, you know, I'm, I've been uncomfortable with that one from the beginning and selling books is a protected right. Anybody can sell a book anywhere they want, really. But it's covered under the freedom of the press, but selling scarves and coffee mugs, it's nowhere protected. And so JLF is a is an exception. And to my knowledge, there's only one vendor who is an exception to that. We've never been challenged on it, but yeah, I don't know. It's a weird one.
Well, if you, if you want to draw a harder line, you know, maybe that's a conversation we have to have a JLF that says, you know, food, I assume is okay because that's part of an event. But yeah, you know, clothing and scarves and jewelry and tchotchkes and all that kind of stuff is another issue. So if you don't think we need a policy, why don't we talk about that offline about JLF? Then. And then the two comments I had, let me see if I can pull them up here on my other computer. On number four, in the rules of conduct, you have violating library policy and you have that link, which is great to our policy page. And you call out that we do have policies for meeting rooms at Canyon Theater in Carnegie, which I think is great. I'm wondering if we should also raise up and call out with a link the fact that we have a policy on computer and internet safety and the photography and video recording policy. And why I'm asking that is because over the years I've seen quite a few patrons raising concerns about what they see on other people's computer screens. And the library is of course limited in what it can do. And I think the policy does a good job of explaining that. I'm wondering if elevating that policy up would let people know that there really is something that we're thinking about and there's only so much they can do. And then the other one, the photography and video recording, I'm just mindful of the advice we got at CalCon last fall about making sure we're protected against these First Amendment audits that are part of the culture wars. Maybe if we have a policy right up front that would discourage people from doing it. So I just wanted to put that out as a suggestion.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we'll link to that computer policies.
I'll add that link.
Okay. And then the, the final one I had on the rules of conduct was on, let's see here, number 12, which is the sleeping one. And we have talked about this a little bit in the past. As this is currently set up, our definition of facility includes the areas outside around the library facilities and includes the underbelly. And I know that the security folks do around outside as well as inside to encourage people not to be sleeping. But there's really nothing we can do about people sleeping at night and we know, we know they're doing that. So I'm wondering if we should add something like during normal business hours to this number 12, so that we kind of make it clear that our control only goes so far.
I think that's a smart addition, Johnny.
And that was all I had.
You can imagine that I was expecting you were going to say we would have to somehow enforce it 24/7. That's where I thought you were going. I was like, oh no. Within business hours, that, that's, that's reasonable.
Since we changed the IGA, right, that's back in the cities, bailiwick. And I think whatever we can do to make it clear that we are not the ones who are responsible for that, I think would be helpful. So.
I just, so I, I would want to make sure though, so if I wouldn't, because the, the idea is not that it would be allowed at night, right? It's just that it wouldn't be within the library's purview.
Yeah, we, we're hands off.
But is it within the cities at night?
Well.
Like if we, does that carve it out for everyone or is that just carve it out?
Just carve it out. Because the city just lands in the whole, you know, the whole encampment problem. And then they've got their own policies and their own rules about whether they can move people around. And I'm hoping we can just stay out of there. Doug, are you trying to say something?
Yeah, I was gonna just say that that it, it's already illegal to camp outside. So the city would manage that however they manage that.
So does, does someone want to make a motion to approve the revised code of conduct with the amendments offered tonight? Don't all jump on it.
I'll make a motion to approve the code of conduct.
All second.
Okay, great. That's Doug and Sylvia. All those in favor? Most of you are on mute, so you're going to need, and I can't see your faces, so you're going to need to say something. Okay. Okay, Doug, I assume you're an I since you made the motion, as you know honestly. Okay.
Great.
The Canyon Theater policy?
Yes. So we had a very robust discussion about this one too, and took your input back and kind of reworked the, the draft that you saw in the previous packet in December to more match some of the other policies where there is a a way for somebody to use a resource, you know, register for time. And I think we got everything that was offered up incorporated. Do you have any questions or comments or edits to the version that was in your packet this evening?
I have nothing. Does anybody have anything? Looked good to me.
Nothing for me either.
Okay. Can we get a motion to approve as presented in our packet tonight? This is the Canyon Theater pilot.
I'll move to approve the Canyon Theater. What, what do we, I'm sorry, I don't have the title. The Canyon Theater use policy as attached in the packet.
Great.
I'll second.
Jen seconds. Okay. All those in favor? I. Sam, Benita, Doug?
I.
I'm, I'm going to assume that was an I all going at the same time. I see a hand up there. Okay, yeah. Okay.
I'm good. Yes.
Okay, great.
I'm having trouble.
Thank you.
Okay, so that takes us to the trustee appointment process. And we had some comments that came in from the county and then from the city at the very end of the comment period. And staff, I understand you have done some work to incorporate those into the packet. So do you want to take it from there?
I can. Maria's here tonight if you have any questions. So we did accept most of the suggestions that came in that were, that I felt were reasonable. There were some that were broad requests, like can you make this shorter? And another request to create a glossary. For those, we did not do anything. I think those two suggestions are in conflict for one, make it shorter and create a glossary. But it's, we, we did, we did alter the words where there may be some ambiguity. So for instance, changed, have you observed in a board where equity was a policy or something like that? And then we changed that to inclusiveness and kindness were paramount or something like that. So there were some modifications, but I, I feel like it's ready to go. For the document, I know there were some questions about the Spanish translation and I, my understanding that you guys will talk about that tonight. My recommendation is that we have already begun the translation of the materials to market the opening. So there would be things to, that we could go out that would be for anybody to receive, not necessarily saying, please, you apply now. But you know, that's something, somebody could tell their friends like, hey, you ought to look at this opportunity. But we did not, we did not and do not plan for the reasons that were outlined in one of the county commissioners' things to translate the application. So obviously we look forward to hearing your input on that. Maria, anything to add?
No, I think I did cover everything.
Doug or Benita, I would kind of turn it over to you guys since you are the selection committee. And I think we're in some sense sort of delegating to you from here on out.
Hey there. So I had a couple of things. One was adding into the the listing of like definitions, the names of the selection committee. So I thought it was important to indicate who the two county commissioners are and the, the council members as well as our role as it relates to the Board of Trustees. That was one suggestion I had. And the second one had to do with oh, I was talking to Doug about like how we could reach people and how we could possibly, you know, like sort of offer an opportunity for people to connect if they had any questions in a pre-application process. And one suggestion would be to offer a time, like to say before the next meetings. Doug and I would be available to answer questions that people might have who are considering applying or another approach. I mean, it could be that if in the listing of the selection committee, we could note, you know, please directly contact us if you have any questions or you're, you know, you'd like more information before you're, before you apply. Those are just a couple of thoughts I had just to create an opportunity for people to reach out to somebody, right? And to have some kind of connection to to the Board of Trustees before they apply.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm okay. They can put my email or, and they said, you could say contacts, you know, either Benita or Doug, if you have questions or want to know what it's like. And then I'm okay doing like an informational. When, when are the applications due? I can't remember. Are they due?
The end of the month, the 29th.
Yeah. So I think I'd be available. I think our, the week of the, the meeting on the 20th. I could come beforehand and we could do like, if somebody wants to come in and do a Q and A, you know, I'd be available on the 20th to do that. And then, and then if they wanted to sit through a trustee meeting, they could do that too. Maybe that's good for them. I'm okay with that.
So on the 20th, are you saying 4:00 PM?
Uh, what, if the meeting starts at 6:00, maybe we say it 5:00.
I think that's a great idea, you guys, especially the information session. The only question I would have is if we cause any problems for ourselves if we let people do individual contacts to you if we've got favoritism because you're giving some people some information and others. And I see Sylvia, you're on the same wavelength.
Okay, I get that.
I think one way to avoid that is if you were to, I think it's a great idea to be able to answer questions, but maybe record the question and the answer so that other people can see it. So that way no one has the impression that you've given someone some special like insight and how to become selected. Maybe it's like, you know, it's, people can ask the question individually, but then make the answer with the question open to everyone. I think that would solve some of the fairness concerns.
I think that's, that's a good, we could, we could do the session and then we could, if, if we get a question individually, we should just note on there that the answer will make them available to anyone who we'll, we'll, we'll put them on the website or whatever.
Yeah, that's a great idea. That could work.
Yeah, I had the same concern that, because I know in, in like a traditional job hunting process, usually companies discourage people from reaching out individually unless there's like a practical logistical kind of question. And so for this reason, people just try to use it as like a way to network, which, you know, is fine. But the, but I like the idea of having a public session that's like, if you're interested and you want to come, like we'll answer your questions and we can talk, you know, whatever. Not everyone's going to be able to do that. So then, yeah, but so I think if there's some way to like aggregate any questions that get answered, so everybody has access to those answers, that would be, that would help.
Yeah, we'll, we'll figure out a, sorry, we'll figure out a way to record that, you know, with the, maybe in the Canyon Conference Room. So that, you know, we can repeat it and make sure that we'll just record it and post it up there.
Well, and hopefully provide a Zoom link so people can.
Or a Zoom link, yeah.
And then record that way.
That's true.
No, I think that's a great idea. Anything else on the packet? Are we, we comfortable with just approving the packet based on the representations that staff has made?
So did I get a nod of okay on listing the selection committee members?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
And I'll make a motion to approve the package it's provided or the, you know, the application.
Second.
Not as amended by staff.
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
I, yes.
Hi.
Hi, okay, that passes.
Okay, we'll, we will post the infoball updated tomorrow. Post that information on Thursday. It will be posted on the county's website on Thursday. The city doesn't have currently a page to put it to the library, so I don't know that they will post it. We have a press release going out also on Thursday that I think the press release Maria is in English and in Spanish, although not sure we know of a Spanish news source. And then we plan on doing weekly social media messages to encourage people also to apply right up until the deadline. So we'll do one, one a week, I think is the plan currently. But yeah, I hope to get some good applicants. It's, it should be fun.
That sounds great. One follow-up piece that Sylvia and I have on our to-do list is creating an orientation package for new trustees. So we'll start working on that. And to that end, who has the copies of the trustee handbooks right now? Sylvia has one. Jennifer has one. There's three of them.
I think Kara has one.
Okay, we just.
I don't know.
Yeah, because remember we were going to share it and you took it first?
That sounds familiar. Yeah, I'll look. There's a little bit of difficulty. So yeah.
We circulate those and we just have them back, you know, by April so that we can have copies for the new trustees, because I think that's part of the orientation package. And I'm thinking we're going to do things like the orientation stuff we got from the state library last year, some of the resources we have up there. We'll probably have some things from the retreat that we put in there. So we'll work on that and bring that to you all at some future time.
Yeah, I also have a lot of stuff, Johnny. I'll share that with you and Sylvia.
Great, thank you. Jen?
Johnny, may I just share something quickly related to this? I did want to share in advance of kicking off this application process that I I have decided to resign from my, my seat on the board at the end of my first year. I have taken a new job at a political nonprofit in an election year and because of the professional commitment and time that's going to be required for that role and and some personal commitments, I didn't feel that I would have the, the time that would, that would be required to, to continue to serve on this board in a, you know, value-added way. And so so the application process will, I've connected with David and our board president about this already. But the process will actually be searching for two new trustees and not just the one replacement. But I wanted to let all of you know that. And happy to chat to anybody after the, the board meeting. But I have really appreciated and all of your camaraderie and how much I've learned in the last year and being able to contribute to this transition has been really a, a, a great honor. So I wanted to share that with all of you here before we kicked off the process to find new trustees.
Jen, you have been, you have been a great board member. You are, I thank you for all the work you did and I, you will be missed. I'm gonna, I'll have speeches ready in April and and we'll have to get a bigger cake with you and Johnny both leaving, so.
Yes. Jen, I'm sorry to hear this and I'm kind of stunned by it, so I'm going to absorb it. But for the sake of that application and the press release, there is a reference in that release that says there's one vacancy, right? So now it needs to indicate that and make that change. So that, I don't know if it requires approval again by this group, but just acknowledging that that changes the motion that we just adopted. Because it did not reflect that. So.
Yeah. I don't think it really creates a substantive change since it's two people and instead of one, one four-year and one five-year. And and Jen, I also want to say, you know, thank you for sharing your time with us this transition year and for sticking it out through April. You have been wonderful. We couldn't have done it without you. And I also am sorry to see you go, but I understand all the reasons as we discussed earlier. So and I really appreciate your coming up and making that change now so we can do this replacement in an orderly fashion that's entirely in keeping with the professionalism I think you've shown throughout your tenure on the, on the board. So thank you very much for that.
Yeah, I'll third or fourth that. Thanks, Jen. Really great serving with you on the Personnel Committee and I will sure miss you. But congratulations on the new job.
I'm personally devastated, but I will, I'm, I'm glad, I appreciate everything that you've done. And yeah, I'm, I'm glad we get to keep you for a few more months, but we'll just, we'll just have to like, you know, appoint you again and you'll just have to stay, so.
No, I'm sure there's always ways to stay involved and help the library, so. Well, okay, on that sad note, so we moved to cyber insurance review of BRAID bids.
Yeah, so we're not reviewing bids tonight. What I am hoping to do is you know, we have talked about it prior. There's a neighboring Front Range Library who we all borrow from frequently, who was recently a victim of Who was recently a victim of a ransomware attack that has crippled them for a week or two. And they're uh they have a good insurance policy, thank goodness, but they estimate like even without a full loss of. Services, the damages are well into six figures, so somewhere in the neighborhood of around two hundred thousand dollars. So it is my feeling, it is the feeling of of Jackie and Focus Connect as well as Amy, as well as our our insurance company. They would like to be here tonight as well to convince you all um that uh we need to do something uh as quickly as possible. And so my I have collected bids. I did that in the process where we were looking at insurance prior. Um I did get four bids, um none of which were in excess of twelve thousand dollars for the annual fee. We did not get complete coverage, so there was one coverage at least that I had asked them for. Uh up to a million dollars in coverage for which they were unsuccessful in getting a bid on. Um but I I would like for you to uh move tonight, much like you did um. Back in November, uh recognizing the need for us to get insurance, to give me that purview. To uh ask Jackie and Amy and our insurance company to identify the best uh deal for us. And uh lock in an insurance uh contract that you would get next month. I I don't think the total cost is going to be more than twenty thousand, even with the additional one million dollars of liability in terms of catastrophic loss. And I and I and I should imagine it's going to be less than that. I think if I remember the conversation correctly, when we first brought this up, one of the main concerns was, could we get it? Could we get all of the coverages that we wanted and what would be the cost? Uh the cost, it turns out, is negligible. Um twelve thousand dollars would easily fit within the amount of money that we had allocated for. But if you remember the cost of the property, casualty, liability, workers' comp, D N O, none of that. Total more than a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We had budgeted significantly more than that. So I I feel uh I feel compelled the to get it as soon as possible. I have four bids. I M A is recommending a company. I have not been able to give uh Amy and uh Jackie that bid to see if it's to our satisfaction. But I'd like to. And I'll open it up for thoughts.
Well, I think, David, that the fact that you shared that one of your neighboring library counterparts had experienced this is is. But as as a testament to the fact that we're all exposed to this world that we're living in with cybercrime. One out of every four companies, that's a very true statistic these days. One of every four companies experiences some kind of cyber threat. Um I can tell you that the city had experienced some threats such as this, uh have had deep conversations with the city I T team about it. Um to see what I can learn about the specific kind of attack, because it's sort of helpful to us to know who those. Uh those professional criminal groups are, as they all have different strategic attempts in how they try to penetrate. And we all have to kind of do our part to minimize risk. As an I T company, we put our best foot forward to make sure that you have. Protection from things like ransomware and every possible measure from an I T standpoint that we can provide you to protect your infrastructure and your people. Um however, the world of cybercrime is still, it's it's widespread and prevalent. There are zero day threats, which are things that happen on the same day. That in some cases, there are no ways to fight. Even Microsoft was hacked for about four hours in the middle of the day about three months ago. That didn't really make the news, but it was very big in the I T community. Um you also have uh lots of third party vendors working with you. So that includes, you know, people that have access to some things behind the scenes, such as people that develop applications. That run the facilities for the buildings, um third party security companies. There are all kinds of um people involved in your infrastructure. And while we can do our best to protect everything, we sometimes don't have control over their devices. That are issued to them by their companies that they work with. So um we keep a watchful eye, but having cyber liability insurance is is just an important step. In mitigating your own risk and the risk that a a board would face. So um I would highly suggest it.
Now, I just want to make a procedural point. Um David, if if the um cost of these is under thirty thousand dollars. You are already authorized, no Sylvia? You're yeah, you're nodding. You're already authorized to do that under the financial policy that we adopted. Last June. Um so we could do a motion that says we want you to go ahead with the cyber insurance. And if it exceeds thirty thousand, that's fine. Pick the best you want, um just to give you a little bit of hedge. But technically, I'm not even sure if you really need a board motion.
Well, the only reason the only reason I'm asking Johnny is because in the discussion of the insurance that we had back in October and November. I don't know that it was consensus, but there was definitely a discussion around cyber insurance. And there were at least a couple of members of the board who indicated that they didn't think it was necessary. Um or maybe not affordable. I I don't want to characterize what they thought. It was but it was but it was definitely a topic of discussion. And so in the course of shopping for insurance throughout December, um I made it clear to the. You know, I M A, the company that we the broker, that we were not going to get it at that time. Uh but I would be back in January to talk about it. And so here I am, it's January. And now we're I'd like to just move past that, whatever uh stress points we had around picking up. Cyber liability insurance, which I feel like we need.
Okay.
Yeah, I I support. I I thought, Kim, when we were having that discussion. Is there some immunity for public entities around this or what's it what's the law around that? Or is there any? And maybe I'm just misremembering it.
With regard to cyber insurance?
Yeah, well, yeah, with regard to this type of, yeah, not insurance, but uh liability. For a cyber attack or something like that or ransomware.
Yeah, i- if there was some claim against you because of an attack with ransomware, you would have that same governmental immunity. But I think what your greater concern is is damage to your own system and downtime.
And our our costs that we probably would have to incur is what we'd be insuring against. Okay.
Right, and and paying a ransom, I think is what these companies usually end up doing.
Yeah, okay.
Well, so it sounds like a motion is in order. Does somebody want to try um making a motion to. Um authorize the director to go forward to um acquire a cyber insurance policy. Um in the range of the amount he's talked about tonight, and if it exceeds thirty thousand. That's okay, or how do you want to word that piece of it?
Uh I'll I can make a stab at it, a motion to uh give the the director the authorization to. Proceed to get cyber insurance within his uh pre-approved uh spending limits.
Yeah. Okay, so you want to leave it at the thirty thousand dollar limit?
Would we want to make it so that it's open, open ended, so that if it's above thirty, he has, we don't have, he doesn't have to come back and get another approval?
Okay, is there is there a different, like fifty?
Well, no.
Or just open?
It doesn't sound like it's going to be over, right, David?
I don't think so. I don't think it'll be over thirty, but um. Yeah, that one million that we couldn't secure, we'll see if that's the that's the hitch where it's really complicated, the one million dollars in coverage that we were hoping to, I was hoping to get. You want to make it within the remaining budget of the insurance that you approved in the, when you approved the budget? Yeah, I mean, I had a ballpark number in mind. I don't think we ever made that a public number with the board. I mean, I was I was thinking that the property liability and workers' comp are going to be a lot more than they were. We also don't have flood insurance yet, so I wouldn't want to spend all the rest of money. Uh so we don't have flood insurance for Maine or Reynolds libraries yet.
Hey, David, is this a is this the price for an annual policy? Is this just one year? Okay.
A one year policy, yeah.
Okay.
I I'm I'm comfortable working with whatever. Thirty thousand is fine. Let's start there. And if it turns out to be a, it costs thirty one, I'll call you all on the phone and make you vote.
Well, we're not in a huge rush, right? Like, we don't have to have this. I mean.
Yeah, we needed it yesterday.
I I mean, yeah, I'd like to lock it down. I'd like to lock it. I have four bids. I'd like to.
Oh, you already have the bids.
I I have four bids. I'd like to lock one of those companies in and then uh one once Jackie and Amy sign off. And then uh and then from that point, explore the further one million dollars in liability, which may take us. I mean, the flood insurance has taken a month. It could take us a month to get that further liability insurance. I don't know that will, but.
Okay, so so I'll just amend my thing just to say to obtain cyber insurance with with no cap. But, you know, that's what I'll say and you and you can use your discretion, David. You know, the the budget.
I'll be.
Thank you.
Okay, you have a motion by Doug. Is there a second Sylvia, a second?
All second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hey, all those in favor?
I.
Sam, I see you lighting up your green light. Okay, looks like that passes unanimously.
Thank you all very much. Um hopefully we'll have something locked in in the next couple of weeks.
Thanks, everybody. I'm going to say good night.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Pleasure to meet you all.
Bye, Jackie.
Bye bye. Bye, Jackie, bye, Amy. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're up to the director updates, David.
Yeah, so I'm uh the big part of my update is I want to introduce Eric Mead. Eric Mead will be the consultant we're working with uh for the retreat. Eric has uh spent a a full proposal, part of which I've copied into your packet and the director's report. His intention, which I'll let him talk about, some is, you know, to to be in touch with each of you and talk through the thing. We'll also do the yourself evaluation that you guys approved at the last meeting. And Eric will will find some ways to walk you all through that during the retreat as well. But Eric comes to us, you know, recommended with a with a not really illustrious history, done some work uh in libraries. Um and in libraries that I'm quite familiar with from back in Ohio. So I'm I'm pleased to introduce Eric. Eric, do you want to take it away and say a few words?
Sure, thank you, David. Hello, everyone. Nice to meet you and um it's good to come on on camera. I have been listening in and just uh it's been a nice chance to just observe you and and get to know you. But I will be reaching out to all of you, to all of the board members, to do a thirty to forty five minute interview. Just to get to know you and understand your perspectives on um on the board and um what this board needs. And it know it's a new board, but what it needs to move on that journey to really becoming a high performing team and support the the library district. So I will um I'll be reaching out to all of you about that. And we will, I'll work with David to make sure that we're doing that at a time when you're not over overloaded with a lot of other things. Because I know there's a lot going on at the library. So but it'll be over the next few weeks, leading up to that uh retreat. And on the first Saturday in March. Also, I'll be involved in the survey, the board evaluation, so we'll have that in the conversations. And with that, I'll I'll come in with my own perspective as well of in addition to what David has shared. And um and what you all have thought about as a team on how to use that time most effectively. Um so I won't take too much more of your time right now, because you have other things to do. But I'm open to any questions about me or that process or anything that's on your mind before we move on to something else.
Sure, Eric. Um so tell us a little bit about yourself, where's your background? Do you live in Boulder County? What's up with?
I live in I live in South Boulder, um been in the area for about seven years, came from the East Coast before that, from the D C area. Whereas it a a futurist think tank out there, if anyone knows the name Elvin Toffler and the book Future Shock. Uh that was the tradition that that think tank was in. So um I've worked as a futurist and kind of a a big picture perspective, helping organizations think about strategy. Think about their how they're organized, you know, organizational structure, board development, a lot of those things around helping people. And organizations prepare for the future, which more and more people are realize realizing is complex and uncertain. And um there's a a lot of resilience that needs to be built into the way teams are operating to be effective. So um other interesting facts, uh University of Virginia and uh. Undergrad and an M B A from a school in France and uh but I've worked a lot in. Public and nonprofit nonprofit sector organizations over the past fifteen years, libraries. Um a lot of healthcare as well, nonprofit healthcare and uh federal government nonprofit organizations, all around the same type of work.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
This is this is maybe a little in the weeds, Eric, but I had volunteered to help with the. Um the self-evaluation, that sort of um results and and analysis. Is that something that you would be taking over or would we be collaborating on that or how what would that look like?
I would be happy to, let's chat about that. I'd be happy to collaborate with you on that, because I know from your background, you will have a valuable perspective on that. And uh why don't we, when we chat for the interview, we can talk through how we that's going to work best.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
And I don't have any questions. Just thank you for stepping up and bringing your expertise to us. We really appreciate that. I think this first retreat will be an important one for us. Um so thank you.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to working with you all.
Yeah, more than interesting. I think our first retreat is going to be fun. So we did, we did uh uh. I can't remember the name of the place, but we did lock in the uh location that Benita you had recommended at the last meeting just to look into. So we'll be there on March second. Uh it's a Saturday. We'll be there all day till three. Um the morning is going to be filled up with um, you know, one, talking about some uh library trends, uh really looking uh nationally. And then also locally at library data for uh for Boulder Public Library specifically over the last five years. Uh and then we're going to move into the roadmap, which the leadership team and I are currently working on. Uh just all the work that has to happen in the next three hundred days. Uh it's pretty daunting, but I want you all to kind of wrap your head around all those things that are going to be happening pretty soon. Um and then uh then we have a break and uh a great opportunity, I think, for you guys to talk both about strategy. How you become uh because I think that was what one of your main goals for the retreat was, was to be able to talk about future, how we want to talk about strategies in the future. And then also plenty of time for you to do your self-evaluation, which was another priority for the retreat. So um only a couple of other things in the director's report. I wanted to um bring your attention to the Senate bill uh that's up. Kim is very familiar with this and he probably wrote the original document that I'm I cribbed from to put into the thing. But there is a public hearing uh that was held um yesterday. Um and I don't know how it went. I was unable to attend, but maybe Kim can give us a little bit of insight on that. Um and then lastly, um should anybody need any more assistance with Microsoft and trustee email? Um I think everybody is solved now, but I'm not sure if that's everyone, but please reach out directly to Amy Shum as soon as possible. So that she can get you set up and she will take as much time as needed and sit down with you in person or on the phone or whatever else. And get you hooked up so that we're all working on the same page with the Microsoft products. Uh the last thing, which wasn't in my director's report, but I I should have mentioned it, is um tomorrow night is a public hearing on the North Boulder. Uh day shelter. I I will be in attendance uh uh to hear about what plans, but there's a community meeting. Um if you're interested in attending, it's posted on the city's webpage. And you can uh either be a participant or um it's a virtual meeting. So you can you can jump in on Zim to hear some of the plans that they have for um the day shelter. I did find out, I I think this question was raised here in the past, and I did not know. I didn't know if it was a temporary solution or if it was a long term solution. But it is their intent that it is a, you know, it is the only solution that they have going forward for a day shelter. And so that North Boulder uh the the North Boulder Shelter will serve as the day shelter as well uh moving forward. So I'm anxious to hear what they have to say. I know people who are working on it. I'm curious to hear what the public has to say. And there are members of the public who have have at least requested through email to me that the Board of Trustees take a position. I told him that he needed to reach out to the Board of Trustees to do so. He's asked me to take a position and I have told him I am not going to take a position. Uh it's not my role to take a position on the status of the day shelter, but uh there may be more of that to come. We know it was a topic of great interest to the North Boulder community uh when the design and construction of the library was just an idea. Um now that it's becoming a reality and will open in the summer, um I think there's it's on more people's minds as well. And I'm happy to take any questions about anything and everything and all that I covered, all that's not covered, so let me know.
So I I'd like to go back to the retreat for a moment, just from a point of view. Not, this is not about the retreat, but. Not this is not about the retreat, but Celia pointed out that we have a special meeting scheduled on March fifth, which is right after the retreat. Um do we want to retrain that date or do we want to skip that? Um and that's not something you have to answer tonight, but why don't you think about it and just let me know and do a poll or something to see if we want to keep that? Um I know we all like to spend a lot of time together, but that might be a lot to ask with people is that much time together. We don't have anything specific scheduled on that um meeting on the fifth right now.
Johnny, can you review the dates of the meetings in February?
Um uh let me pull up the um.
Because I just wondered about that week right before the retreat too, and just wondered if what was up on that one and whether it was needed.
Yeah, so.
Oh, you got it, Johnny.
Great, thank you, Celia.
Yeah, on the thirteenth, we've got a virtual meeting and then the twentieth is the regular in-person meeting right now, the twentieth of February.
Okay. So no meeting on the twenty-seventh, retreat on the second, question mark on the fifth, and then when is the next meeting in March, the twelfth?
No, it's the nineteenth.
Okay. Hmm.
Um and then the um second thing was on the the uh transition to the emails, I think it would be really helpful, at least for me, to have a date certain when we are all going to be on the email and when we are, for those of us who are having our emails ported over, when they're ported over. Um I'm currently working in three different email boxes and it would be useful to consolidate them into one, but I think we need to be doing it at the same time. When I spoke with Amy, she had indicated that they were going to try to transition my stuff from Gmail by like February second. Um so so I don't know if we need to talk about that, but I think if we have a date certain when we know, okay, now we can put up the note that says I'm not using this email anymore, that would be helpful.
Yeah, that was my question is like, what is there anything we all need to be doing as far as porting our Gmail over or anything? I I'm just not sure what's required of us. Like, I'm already on the Outlook uh email option, but I I don't know what I need to do with the Gmail account.
It's my understanding that Amy's going to port that over for us. Doug?
Yeah, that I mean, that was my question. Will they contact us? I guess Amy, you'll contact us and we can give you the way to you can access to our account and you can port that stuff over. Is that what you plan to do?
I don't know the answer, I but.
Oh, okay.
I I I was, I mean, I I think but I don't want to, I don't want to presume, right? Like, our our assumption was that everybody would be our by now, and so the plan was in the first few days of February, we were going to begin.
Okay.
But I but I I don't want to, I don't I don't want to put anybody at the spot. I don't want to do anything.
Well, just ask her if what she plans to do and and I've already moved over and I put on a little out of office thing that says if you email this, email the other one. And uh that's what I did.
And so why why don't any of you who are having any difficulty just send me an email or a text uh in the next couple of days? And uh we'll 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 figure out a reasonable timeline for that. And then uh it at but you know, best case scenario, uh I I should think by the next meeting uh we're set um that everybody's on. And at least some of the porting of the past the emails from other accounts is underway. If not, if not done.
I had just a little related question. Maybe this is for Kim. Um is it required for, I don't, I don't have like a huge volume of emails in my sort of dedicated BLD account. Um if other people who worked at the library at the time I was sending them were CCed on, is is it required for us to move whatever data is in that old email box to the library servers? Um or is it sort of like we only need to do that if there's some reason to do that, if that makes sense?
It's not required, but the danger you run is that if there's litigation or some core request, your personal email could be opened.
Okay. Okay, so just, all right, so we want to give Amy our credentials and have her just move everything over so that we don't. Okay, got it. Thank you.
And I suspect that we hadn't, I I don't remember if we had this conversation, because when we first started, you know, when we were first selected, um before we created the Gmail accounts, we also might have emails in our other personal email addresses um before we created the Google Boulder Library accounts, if that makes sense. So I guess we'll have to figure that out too.
So my practice has been anytime I get an email and anything that's not the BLD one, I forward it to the BLD one. So everything resides there and I would recommend that as the easiest way to do it, then you've got a copy and you don't have to think about it.
Yeah.
Okay, so then to recap, we're planning on by next meeting, which would be February thirteenth, to have everybody up and running and hopefully everybody ported over. If anyone's having any issues, let David know. Um those of us who are in the system can chat with Amy. I know she's uh available to do that as a quick way to get things fixed and thanks to Amy and and the team for spending all this time with us to get us, get us educated and get us up and running. Um and then just remember that we can't chat amongst ourselves, helpful as that would be. We can chat with staff, but we can chat in twos if we're doing work on a subcommittee or something, but nothing beyond that.
Yes, David, please extend her thanks to Amy. I think she left us here.
She did, yeah. And she's ready to help. So she's, you know, she she if if anybody needs any kind of assistance, just ping me and we'll get we'll get a call set up and we can get you uh fixed and ready to go. So um one last thing, I I I did forget to mention, so the um self evaluation survey that you guys had developed the last meeting, I'll be sending that out to all of you. Uh hopefully by the end of the week, but at the latest on Monday. And we'll have a two-week turnaround time, so we want to, it'll be open for two weeks. I I've I've looked through the survey. Really getting honest answers, it won't take you more than fifteen minutes. Um you can fill it out and be done, and so I would encourage you to be done as soon as possible. And once we have uh, you know, mostly complete results, um we can begin to look at the from a uh, you know, or or Eric and and Jen can begin to look at it from a point of analysis, so we can hopefully have something really good for you to discuss at your retreat, March second month, but that will take a little bit of time. So we'll we'll open that survey and close it. Probably it won't be closed by your next meeting, but uh the closing of that survey will be imminent on the thirteenth, so I hope to close it by fourteen or fifteenth.
Jumping on that, David and Jen, we appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, um trustee me it matters. Um we need to set a special meeting for February thirteenth. Can I get a motion to do so?
I'll move to set the special meeting for the February thirteenth.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. And then the other things we have to wrap up some governance things from last time, before we jump into bylaws, um just a reminder that you have the affirmation of ethics, a form that we looked at and approved last time, the conflicts of interest disclosure and certification. And then Kim has provided um the acknowledgement of trustee responsibility for executive session information and library use privacy. That's a new form. Um Sam raised that last time. I don't know if anybody needs to discuss that. Um it looked fine to me. It looked pretty straightforward. Um so if you guys can all print those out, each of those forms and execute them and get them back to, who should we send them to? Celia, David?
Yeah, Celia and copy me.
Okay. That'd be great.
Can we do that? Can we do that electronically or do we need to physically?
I I'm sure you can do it electronically if you have the ability to sign electronically. Yeah, Ken's nodding.
Yeah, so it's a PD, it's a PDF, I believe, and you should be able to sign it if you have the software. Like, I mean, I have the software on my computer. I don't think all of them do. We're moving away from Adobe Sign because it's such a pain in the ass to something else, but um yeah, so if you have.
Can can we just do like the S slash name kind of thing or you have to actually sign?
Uh I'm unfamiliar with the S dash.
Can I can I just like type it in or?
Yeah, I think that's fine, as long as you accompany accompany it with an email saying, you know, I signed these, something like that.
Okay.
And just to note that the conflict of interest form actually has things we have to fill out on it. It's not just a signature, so. Okay, cool. Um so now um bylaws, um we have changes that were uh requested last time that are in the draft you have in the the document tonight. Um again, we are not approving bylaws tonight. That's scheduled for the thirteenth. If there are any questions or concerns about the languaging that we've had, we should discuss that. And then Anita wanted to reopen the question of um officers in the annual meeting. So Anita, why don't I turn it over to you?
Um nothing more to add to my email message. I just, you know, after thinking about you know, just the cycle of our process and the changes and, you know, I mean, yes, I there was consensus about an annual meeting and that's, you know, should be done, but I just wasn't in agreement on the April before appointing, you know, new people coming on in May. So I was looking for some way to have either, you know, if we didn't want to have an annual meeting in May with new officers and allow for their participation, then I wanted to at least have something that structurally made sense with the beginning of a year and a fiscal year and a, you know, a budget year that we operate under. So I, you know, just was proposing a January annual meeting, which um you know, or it could be that the president determines the annual meeting. I don't know, something there, but I that's what I was getting at. I just felt like it needed to be, you know, other organizations start a fresh new year with their new officers and all of that in play at the beginning of a year and April just seemed awkward to me. Especially with new a new member or two um coming on just, you know, two weeks later potentially.
And so just a reminder, last time, um the discussion was to um go with the officer elections and the annual meeting in April for this year, and we set up a process with timing to do that. Um and then the notion was that you guys would see how that went and then revisit it at next year with the bylaws revision. And Anita, I did want to address one thing in the email um that you said about the timing of bylaws review, which is not in keeping with anything I have seen around um bylaws. You said that bylaws are are fairly static and should be reviewed like on a ten or twenty year.
No, I didn't say ten. I said five or ten.
Yeah, so the best practices, everything I've seen in best practices is that bylaws should be reviewed at least every two years. Um a lot of organizations do them annually, both to make sure their board members are up to speed on them and just to keep them current with what's going on, especially if it's a newer changing organization. So I just wanted to raise that, because I think you know, you guys can do it to want going forward, but as it's new and as we're changing, it seems like it's useful to keep reviewing those. You don't want what you say you're doing to be out of step with what you're actually doing. So reviewing your bylaws again next year, I think, makes sense under any circumstances. So.
Thank you. Thanks. It's just not, it's just we have had different experiences, I guess, Johnny. So I just, you know.
Sylvia.
Oh, I I think there's just one other thing. Um Anita, in your email, you made mention to the, like, some reference to one of the the um some of the language in the bylaws were um due to Johnny's preference, and I just wanted to correct that. Those bylaws were created by the subcommittee and they were represented and presented to all of you and worked on by the subcommittee. So those are our recommendations as a subcommittee and I I don't I just wanted to make sure you were aware that that wasn't just one person working on that. That was a, that was committee work.
My maybe said Johnny by by name. I just meant by the president, like, you know, it could be at the discretion of the president. And it just happened that the president was on the committee that drafted the bylaws.
So does anybody want to open up discussion about the um content of this uh suggested revisiting?
I I mean, I I don't have a wrong opinion, but I think this year it would probably make sense to have the annual meeting in April since it's already February and then and then, but that would give us like a good um I don't know what the word is, but it would give us a good like experience, because then we'll have had it in April and then we'll bring on new board members and then we can see how we feel, you know, at the end of this year about whether we want to change it to January. Do it again in April, once we've like had an example of doing one or the other. I think like this year just practically would make more sense to just go with what we've been planning and then you know, if we feel like, you know, we start with the new board members in May and we're really wishing that they had been with us for the meeting that we did in April, you know, that we could change that next year.
Yeah, no, I wasn't suggesting changing this year. I was saying that this year was at, you know, the discretion of the president or at and this date of April, right? And not May, when new people are coming on. And um you know, this gives Johnny an opportunity to participate in an annual meeting, which I think is, you know, important to do. And so that's why it is April, but I was suggesting that, you know, the bylaws could then reflect that you know, an annual meeting would be held in the first month of the calendar year to align with our fiscal, you know, budget cycle. And yes, I mean, it could be revisited. Again, I just think with other things going on that I think we'd want to put, you know, put our best effort into the bylaws and and yeah, and not have to be revising them.
Um and I'm so sorry, I just have to just kind of add, I think we are putting our best efforts into the bylaws.
I'm not saying that we're not. I'm not, I don't misread my comment, please.
But no, you just said we should put our best effort into the bylaws. Um we are putting our best effort into these bylaws. We do want that is possible. Um you know, and hopefully the changes we have to make in the future are just because of the newness, we won't probably have to make a ton of changes, but I just wanted to kind of push back on that.
I was not at all critiquing the work that has been done today on the bylaws. I think it's the we collective, we, myself included. I'm just trying to bring something forward that I think better aligns with the calendar schedule and it is awkward that, you know, the appointment of members happens in May and that was a delay that wasn't of our doing. And I just think it can flow better as a January process of engagement.
And personally, I think that January may make sense for the board to shift to um in the future, but realize you'll have to adjust officer terms in that way as well. So the change to the bylaws is a little bit more complicated um than that, and I would strongly recommend that you all look at that, you know, after we see how this first round goes and you could then create something where you have a year where officer terms are either shortened or lengthened in order to coincide with the January annual meeting and then landed in January. Um so you know, I think that's all certainly things that folks could do going forward. But I'm not hearing a whole lot of interest in going back and reopening this. Doug, did you want to say?
Oh, I just, do we have to? We don't take a vote on this today. We, you know, if 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 we don't get you know, people to agree to reopen it, then I think we should just like, I I think it's well noted and I I like the idea and I think we should you know, revisit it at the end of the year and see how this went. So that's my take.
Okay. Great. And so does anyone have any comments about any of the other um things that we added? Um most of these were discussed. Um the the language that's new that you have not seen was the um the part about expanding what the president does, which was my fault. I wrote and then didn't realize we hadn't included, so I've put that in there. Um so again, if you if you see anything, if you have any issues, you know, shoot an email to me or to Sylvia. Um this is scheduled for adoption on the thirteenth, so it's not something we have to do um right away and we appreciate your your patience with this. We are trying to think it through and give everybody time to sort of settle in and make these the best we can in our ever evolving situation here. Okay, um so then I think we are up to legal counsel updates. Kim is. Kim, is there anything you wanted to address with us before we go into executive session?
Uh just, just one thing, you have the legal status report, there's not much on there. I did make an error, Johnny pointed out in uh indicating that the admin resolution was approved at the last meeting, which it wasn't. Uh and I didn't wanna resend it out this afternoon, be just before the meeting, so we'll take it up at the next meeting uh with some changes that had been recommended. Other than that, we're ready for the executive session, if you choose to do that.
Yay, um I think an executive session would be a good idea, I'm excited to talk about this, can we get a motion?
So I'll move, I'll move to move to elect um executive set and and you can make it sound like I made a good motion there, Kim.
So what Doug said was, the board may enter into executive session to discuss the purchase, acquisition, or lease of real property and determine positions on matters subject to negotiations as allowed by the relevant CRS quote uh with regard to a potential branch library to serve the Gunborough community.
Thank you.
That's what you meant, right, Doug?
That's what I meant.
Okay, bye, Chris. Um who seconded? I heard voices. Sylvia, okay.
I can second, but I'm I'm just practically speaking, how does that work with a Zoom meeting? Do we have to, I mean, do we stop the recording? Do we, I mean, how, like, how is that practically working?
Um, yeah, I just made uh Kim host, so the meeting should not end when I leave the session. And can you can just push, do you see the recording up at the top? You can just push stop, or um perhaps I don't have to do that now.
Actually, Celia, if you wanna go ahead and and stop recording, I just started a recorder here.
Oh, okay, um I made you, would you be able to make me a co-host momentarily, so I can?
Is it just clicking that button in the left-hand corner?